Okay, we'll call the Select Board meeting to order at 7:04. Hold on Jim, I gotta start recording. Okay, Mike.
Recording in progress.
Please join us to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the agenda as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the poll?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Approval of minutes from 7:24, 2023.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from 7:24, 2023 as presented.
Okay, a second.
Second?
Second. Changes, corrections? Okay.
Mike up. One, there's citizens comments and concerns, the second line down, first word should have been, should be changed from went to been, it has been two weeks. So we should add, it has been in lieu of when.
Good.
For context.
Anything else?
That's all our thing.
Go.
Just above that, under approval of the minutes in the section regarding page five, the second line reads, "And given that there are persistent and period issues," I'm not sure what that means, but I don't think it's necessary, so I would just delete end period from that sentence.
Anyone else still?
No.
What was it, you want us to delete though?
The phrase end period between persistent and issue.
Oh, okay.
Bob, anything else Allison? Yes, no.
No, who's good?
You're set. Bob, anything for you?
I'm good, you're good?
You're good, okay. All those in favor approving the minutes with corrections indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. Mary Lee refused herself, she was not here, she was in the air.
I was over Chicago.
Literally. Okay, citizens comments or concerns, that she was not on the agenda. Would anyone wish to address the board item, not on the agenda.
I have a question.
Mary Drosy.
Mary Drosy, okay.
I have two questions. My first question is, does the select board town manager have any information to share with the public about the sale of CBS? Any updates?
I don't believe so. Mike?
Just for transparency, say, that we've had a prospective tire kicker person, Zach Hale, has reached out and spoke to the rec director and the rec commissioner and myself, but that's, it was a reference to a proposal that was made a couple meetings ago.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, given the very unfortunate resignation of our director of Parks and Recreation, when will the position be posted and where can we find the job description, please? Thank you.
Mike, can you answer that?
I can. So I had a conversation with Martha last week, before that posting will happen, I would like to speak to the rec commission, and we will talk about the job description before we post the job, because I don't think it's a very wise move to go into posting a job until we've had a chance to talk with the rec commission.
Okay, good. Will that be at the next regular rec commission meeting?
I left it to Martha, said invite me and I will be there.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else who wishes to address the board item not on the agenda? Mary McIntyre?
Yes, Mary McIntyre. Have the, all of the ARCA funds been allocated yet?
No.
I would like to put a plug in that we use ARCA funds to buy out Hubbardton for the Cassidy Village School.
Do you know what, Mary?
To buy out Hubbardton, for their share of the Cassidy Village School. I don't know if it's possible, but I'm always in my opinion. That's what I proposed we do. I'd also like to just put in another plug that we're seeing an uptick, at least from my perspective, we're seeing an uptick of property owners, property owners who pay taxes in this town, they do not reside here necessarily, but they come up for the rake and they're showing up at what we're calling our recreation facility and they're loving it. They are really pleased, that they feel like they're getting something for their tax dollars. You know, they, a couple of them I've talked to said, you know, we really don't get anything. A lot of them don't get paved roads, they don't take from our schools, but they certainly contribute. So I do think that that is a point we've got to think of, I mean, we have other contributors in town, I know that we keep hearing, you don't want to put it on the burden of taxpayers, but as I pointed out before, I really think that the taxpayers want this, and I'd like to see us venture into it, and I feel it's feasible. But all we're doing now is just spinning our wheels, so, that's my defense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? I'll get that on your agenda. Take care everybody, okay. Moving on to recreation update, Bo. You're up, Bo.
You're muted, Bo.
We can't hear you, Bo.
There we go, how about now?
Perfect, good.
Okay, I apologize for that, I had my screens on different screens and then I couldn't find my mouse to unmute myself. But rec update for this is for July, starting with adult rec to close out, I would say indoor walking as a rec program for the summer, we did continue to hold just an open offer for indoor walking near around the times that the rec center would be open anyway, mostly during those pickleball days on Mondays and Wednesdays, because that's when we saw most activity. No one really took us up after, on our offer there for indoor walking, but that was kind of to be expected with the summer months and the parent attendance as winter spring closed out. So we'll probably see that come back in the winter as the need increases again, but in the meantime, I'm talking with the community center to host some of their walking programs here in the meantime, in the time in between. Pick up pickleball, to echo Mary's point there, actually saw quite an uptick in attendance even just from June to July, I would probably chalk that up to one added session, again thanks to Mary, those Sunday sessions usually saw good attendance, but then also just to, again echo her point, that I think some of our summer flock of folks have started to hear that we have rec offerings happening here, so they definitely helped us with our jump in participants or attendees. We have now five sessions going per week, and in July I was able to count 226 attendees throughout. That wouldn't be unique people necessarily, because there are people who come, you know, multiple times a week, but just getting a head count of who's there. Yoga is something that's been offered through a volunteer volunteering for rec the previous months. In July, we started talking about transitioning that from a rec program to a facility rental, as we were also navigating the basketball facility rental documents, so we figured that was a good time to pick that up with yoga as well. So fewer sessions for yoga under the rec umbrella there, and it was donation based, and moving forward, we're going to be likely for as long as this instructor would like to, you know, continue as a private offering, we're going to transition in August to a facility rental, possibly in September as well. All to say, adult rec had about 238 participants, again, that's not necessarily unique individuals, but that's folks engaging in our programming, or any engagement in our programming, I would say. Onto youth rec, we did have open studio June, and it was a little, it was a little confusing, because I feel like we got a lot of warm feedback for it in June, that was kind of to get it on people's, give people a taste of it, and then I just asked for $5 a month for July, so that we could keep up with our supplies, and whether it was because a lot of the kids were engaging in summer camps, or traveling, or what, we didn't actually have any attendance other than volunteers. But the volunteers got to work on their own little crafts, so it was fun in its own way. For youth rec, we also had, speaking of camps, three camps going, one thanks for our very own Joe Mark. The sailing camp was two weeks long, and it saw 27 campers total and a ton of praise. I'm hoping that some of that made its way to Joe Mark as well, I'm sure it did, but yeah, people are asking for it again, people are asking for, or people are sharing interest in adult sailing, so definitely a good, successful season there. Youth tennis also had probably not as much demand as sailing, but it was also well received. It was a smaller camp than we had hoped, but we did facilitate 10 campers. And then summer adventure camp was really the big fall for summer camp, really kept a lot of kids engaged for the summer. That was an all-day program, five days a week for six weeks, and we did have, we maxed out our attendance at 50 campers each week. Occasionally, we had a couple over that, where we could bear it with staff and them all. So that was a total, that came to a total in June of 237 youth rec participants. Moving on to community support events, I mentioned before we had a basketball, or we had a facility rental, that was from a basketball camp. That was our first facility rental actually, so they were very, very patient and worked with me really well, I appreciated them for that, to get the paperwork together and everything, and so that total came to 525 for their reservation fee there. There have been some other nice little events, like the library round circle, where their rain location, that's not necessarily, that's not a rec event, but it's an event that thankfully we were able to facilitate, and we're happy neighbors, so it was easy as pie. And then the Fourth of July parade, an after-party that obviously happened in July. I don't have attendance data, but I can say that I was running that out pretty consistently, so it was a little travel course. Garden club meetings, they have maintained at about, well, you'll see that it seems like they had more activity in the previous months, but I would say they actually had more activity in July, but maybe fewer members or active members. All to say, there were six community events facilitated at the rec center and rec department in July. As far as meetings attended, just slightly shorter than the last meet, than the last month, some of that is due to summer sessions that were not meeting anymore. And there were a total of eight meetings. Kind of wrapping up with what was mentioned before, I also added just as a note that I have resigned, but I don't have an end date that is decided yet. I've just, you know, I've realized that this is maybe not the greatest fit for me, but I really do care about seeing the success of the rec department in whatever shape that takes, and I've learned so many things along the way that I'm very grateful for, even where I fumbled in areas, I appreciate the guidance and leadership to help me learn from those moments. And all of this to say, even if I unfortunately haven't been able to see myself succeeding in this role long-term, I really do hope to see the success of the next director, and I would like to kind of help pave the groundwork for that, so that the next director can work really well with the rec commission and with the town leadership to make the best future for rec. And more than I have met, that's Zach Hale, actually just today, and I think it was a really positive conversation, very honest, very transparent about everyone's goals, and I'm hopeful that, you know, we can all, all parties kind of work as one to navigate that together, however, again, however things spin out, and whether I am, you know, just ending my term, so to speak here, and passing the baton, or picking up on the other end as a volunteer, I don't hope to be an obstacle, I hope to be a facilitator to improve success. So all to say, my resignation I think is the right decision, but it does come with a very heavy heart, so thank you for, thank you for allowing me to have my time.
Thank you, Bo. Questions for Bo from the board. Ron?
I just want to just add, Mr. Chairman, that these July numbers are very impressive and heartening, and thank you for making them possible.
Thank you, Bo. I'd like to clarify something I said earlier, I said there wasn't any new news on the rec as far as the village school's concerned, the reason I said that, I thought that news was out there, and therefore I didn't consider it was new, and I'd like to thank Mike for his update on that. Anything else on this? If not, we'll move on to bid award for heating oil.
Mr. Chairman, in front of you were bids that we did receive, that we solicited for heating oil. One of them came back with just an amount, and that would be Champlain Valley fuels, and then we asked them to be able to compare against the other bidders if they would give us a price over rack, which they did do. So there is a difference on these bids, as for Champlain Valley, there's option one about a price per gallon plus a two-cent excise tax that would be fixed, and then there's the price over rack. And I, Bob's on, and I, this was brought up previously with bids, and what was the best way to go, was it price over rack or price per gallon? And when we go price per gallon, most people don't want to bid on that because of the volatility. So what's in front of you right now, between local fuel, Champlain Valley, Sam's U-Save, and Kaiser, which did not get back to us with any kind of bids, is comparison of price over rack for local Champlain and Sam's, and then there's a dollar, option one is $2.98 a gallon plus two cents excise tax fixed, so you have a comparison of the price over rack for those, but I would defer that maybe the board would want to hear from Mr. Spalding. I don't know what the price is per gallon anywhere else, so if you're, if the board is thinking that, I cannot provide that. So the only thing you'd make a decision on would be price over rack or go with the $2.98 per gallon, two cents excise tax fixed, and I would defer that to the board if they want to have Mr. Spalding sharing thoughts on that.
What is rec? How much is rec?
Good question. It's over that.
Yeah, I don't know how much, ten cents over or whatever, what's rec in the first place?
What's the rack price now, Bob?
I don't, I don't think I should comment on that.
Okay, I understand.
The rack price changes, obviously.
Sure, I understand.
I just, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for me to comment.
Sure.
On this, you know, me and Mike talked earlier about doing a price or over rack, and I, at the time, I agreed it's called the rack over rack price, but that's probably up to you guys. It involves, it could go up 30 cents, it could go down 30 cents, but more, so I don't know what appropriate way is the, and I, I just don't think, I don't think it's appropriate that I comment on the, sorry, heating oil.
Sorry, Bob, I don't know what the price is out there, so as a comparison of $2.98 per gallon, I can tell you $2.98 per gallon was much lower than the prices last year, but I don't know if it's going to go up. You know, so if it's fixed at $2.98 with two cents excise tax fixed, that's a much better price than it was last year. And what Mr. Spalding said was, the rack price can go up and down, and we don't have any control or predictability on that, so it's going to be that price, and is that what they maybe pay at the port in Albany, and then you add the 15 cents or 10 cents or 12 to that. So I haven't, I'm struggling with this one to give you any kind of my recommendation, because the price seems pretty good at $2.98 compared to last year, but I don't know what it's going to do this year.
Well, it's not, you're holding that price, you're holding that price, $2.98 plus two cents.
Yeah, and the reason is that they were to pre-buy a bunch of fuel, so that's why, that's the explanation I received, because that's why they can offer it at that amount. So if you want stability in a decision, $2.98 plus two cents excise would be, would be the stability versus market prices and the rack prices plus whatever they, is on these bids, so.
Okay.
If I was buying it, I could tell you what I'd do, but I'm not.
I could tell you what I'd do. Is there a motion?
Not hearing a recommendation, I know what I'd do if it were my house, so I'm going to make a motion that we contract with Champlain Valley Fuel for option one, for $2.98 per gallon plus a two-cent excise tax. Thanks for the higher heating season.
Correct him.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second, because there are other discussions.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before you have further, I just want, the price would be good to 14,500 gallons, you know, 20% overestimated usage for option one.
Correct. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
I'm going to think, Jim.
Okay.
I'm going to think.
No problem, Bob.
I don't think I ever paid less than thirty, 330 or 340, I think it was the lowest price I actually paid.
Moving on to propane bid requested.
I'm going to make this easy, I'm going to make a motion, we contract with File Brothers for $1.52 per gallon.
Is there a second?
A second.
A second, discussion. If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Process for new road development. That you Mike or is that you Tom?
I wanted to know what the town's process is.
Mike, are you working on this, along with the Department of Public Works director?
Yes, the Department of Public Works folks were working on it, and I was kind of following along with what they were providing. I wasn't sure if I could have Mr. Kearns address the board the exact question again, so I make sure I answer it appropriately.
Want to ask your question again, Tom, please?
I was more asking it as a, what is, how does a road become, I would think that it starts with the select board and not the road crew. Correct?
That is correct. So if the town wants to build a new road, right, there's a difference, and I want to be, I want to make, that's why I asked you to clarify. If it's an existing road, let's just start there, if it's an existing road and the town, it's not a town road, and somebody approaches the select board to take over that road, the process would be, in a kind of a high of 30,000, but flyover, would be, the select board has to agree to that, and we, and would likely agree, that has to come up to the standards for a minimum of a class three road. And the reason I say that is because class four roads, we get no funding from the state for class four roads, so we want to bring up the class three road standards. So that's drainage, width, shoulders, make sure we have the right of way, because if we, if we already, if the town doesn't own it, we'd have to also get permission from the landowners to be able to put a road through there. So if we took over, pick a road, Avalon Beach Road, and the town doesn't own it, we'd have to go through the process that they'd have to be able to legally, we've got to be able to have the right of way through there, or easements through there, make sure the road is, can be brought to standards, and that's really about maintenance issue. For us to take, for the town to take over a road that has drainage problems, or not enough drainage, or trees that are on the edge of the road, that we can't plow properly, it would be a nightmare for us to do that. So that's the, that's the real process, if we don't, we don't own it, and somebody asks them to take it over. If it's a town road, and it was a class four road, or a trail, or in the case of the property on West Crystal Haven, where the town owned the property, then the town goes through its own internal process, these, to put in a road. And again, try to, again, make sure it meets standards, and that's why they're back up there working on that road now, just for drainage issues. So the town owned the property and they want to put a road in, then we'd be, it behooves us to make sure we put it in at the same class, minimum class three standards.
Who would make that initial decision? The town had a right of way through a piece of property, there was never anything there, it was just a pristine wooded lot. The select board never made a decision, never had a public meeting, never did anything, and the road crew and the town manager just established a road. There was no public comment, there was no comment of what are you going to do with the drainage of said road, all those things. It's never come before the select board, and yet there's a road there.
That I, that I'm not aware of, I did ask the road crew, and in particular Heath and Mike Smith were the ones that were, been around for the longest to answer this stuff. I have to look back in the minutes, but my, what I'm led to believe is that the town did agree, and I say the town, it must be the select board, agree to put that road in there, because there was a complaint, allegedly, the complaint was, when we plow, you really didn't have a place to, you had to back out or try to turn around in the driveway, and that road was solely really put in for the winter to be able to make that round of loop, plowing. And then it got brought up, I think with local residents that, to close it to traffic in the summer, and that, again, that's, I'm only hearing things, I haven't seen minutes of a meeting to show that, but somebody here may recall that, but that's what I have been led to believe at this point.
Does the town own the property where the road was built?
Yes.
Town owns it? Then if you own it, you don't need an easement, I don't believe, you know?
No. The decision, I, I'm not disputing, I'm not arguing with what Mr. Kearns is saying, because I don't have the minutes to argue that. I would just caution that I don't think the road crew just arbitrarily put a road in there with no prior approval, that seems out of the ordinary, it's not a common practice.
A loop at the end of West Crystal Haven, which loops around and allows the plow to go through there in the winter. Everybody understand where it is?
Can you give me an idea of, what's said mill road, what class?
That's, that's a class three road.
And there's a class four, which would be what?
Um. Piantac Road's class four. So it's a dirt road, it just doesn't meet the requirements, and we don't have the easements to, to expand that out there, to put drainage and culverts and things that would have to go beyond the right of way or into the, somebody else's property. And the town tried to do it at one point, um, and it was a, a failure uh, because of communication between the town and the landowner. And uh, it did, it was the Youngs, they basically, things started happening on the property, they didn't commission. So they kindly said, beat it. So that's, that's, that's an example of a class four road, that we maintain, but we don't get any funding from the state to help supplement.
Now, was there a two and a one? So what's a one and what's a two then?
A two, um, so East Harbor Road, I'll just give you examples, uh, East Harbor Road, Creek Road, Blissville Road, South Street, North Road are all class two. Class one is one section that we have, is from Sand Hill Road on Route four A to the bridge, basically just east of the Amtrak station.
Oh, okay.
That one stretch through there, so it's state, it's, the town maintained state class one road.
Okay, thank you, now I know the difference.
Okay. Yes, Tom?
This, I know you can't find the minutes, but this is the uh, Peg, Peg TV when they're paying attention. This is the.
Check the agenda.
That meeting from twelve years ago. And if you watch it, at the fifty, fifty-eight twenty second mark is when this topic comes up for discussion. If you watch it, you can see that none of the select board knew this road was being built at the time. The only person, the promontory, because I had asked him that morning, how is it that a road is being built without any public discussion? When you change the classification on East Crystal Haven, from class three to class four, if there's a, to better, there's a public meeting, we get, we get notified, and I have those documents here, luckily Leo saved every scrap of paper. The select board says, we wanna do this, you, it affects you, we'll have a public meeting, public comment. You don't have to listen to us, you can just keep doing what you're gonna do, but you have to go through a public process to do things. This road was not built with any public process, and this tape will prove it. So you can watch it, if you don't watch it, you can ask Peg TV for it. May ninth, two thousand eleven, I think it was the last meeting at uh, Main Street.
And fifty-eight minutes of summer.
Yeah, it's right here, I mean, you can, just a little stitch, you can follow it, you can gather. You didn't need an easement to build a road, although you didn't build a road where the right of way really is. So that would be another issue. It's over further south than we're, it should be, because you have a drainage problem there. You do need an easement, if you're gonna build a road, and it's gonna put water off onto private property, you do need to easement for that, which you don't have. Every year, this road keeps getting more and more developed. Now there are trenches coming all the way south of there, and you're trying to use my property, basically to drain all of this through my property, which is the smallest lot on the end there, on the waterfront. The pipe that was there, Russ put, and I came here a couple months, a month ago, two, two weeks ago, and said, there's a big problem with that pipe. He said, well, maybe there is, maybe there isn't, I said, well, I can see from the end that it's cracked there. Five years ago, the town knew it cracked. Russ finally put the camera into it, and what, what did he say?
They found uh, a top of it, a crack at the top of it, sixty feet from the east edge, and then they put it in from the lake, and they found a bunch of debris and dirt or something inside it.
He described it to me as catastrophic failure, right?
But I, but I didn't hear that, I'm disagreeably so.
That's, that's how, that's how Russ described it to me. So now you have a road that was never properly established. I asked in the beginning at that meeting, you can see that at least for safety reasons, it'd be chained off, which the select board agreed to chain it off at that time. That's never happened. Somehow, many people in that area have been told it's gonna be opened as a, a road. It is opened as a road most of the year. It's only closed a little bit in the summer, and only if I pass their town employees to get it closed. They've never taken it amongst themselves to do what they said they would do, without me or Brad Turner having to pass them around. The collapsed pipe is now running behind my seawall, and is causing serious damage to my seawall. I said weeks ago, unless you figure out how to mitigate all the water that's coming there, which never was there before. I showed you the picture last time of what the little ditch that accommodated what naturally came to that property over the last eighty years of the dam. So I don't know, I'm at my wit's end, you know? My seawall will not survive the winter. So I'm gonna have to fix the seawall, because the town said they don't have an easement, so they're not responsible.
I'm not sure.
Well, that's what I was told.
By who?
By the previous town, the two town managers ago, and by the previous road commissioner.
You agree with that, Mike?
I, I can't agree, I can't tell you what they said to.
No, Mr. Kearns.
What I've said to, I said to our crew was, that we will replace the culvert, but we do need to work with you if we want an easement through the property. So, because if we, if we, Tom, if we don't get the easement, where do we put the water? It's gonna go on your property no matter what.
It's gonna flood my property, it's gonna flood the next neighbor's property, and it's gonna flood the turner.
So if you work with us, we'll get the stuff fixed, and.
It's not, I told you, it's not solely about the pipe. I could put the pipe in if I wanted the pipe there, but I'm not gonna give the town an easement to drain the whole Crystal Heights development through my land. Every time it rains, my waterfront looks like coffee. It's not right.
Mr. Chairman, what I, I've, I've asked and I've told Mr. Kearns this, we hired an engineer to help us mitigate water. I've shared with the, I talked to the town DPW director and the foreman, and I, I, I know if I, maybe I can share it with the select board, that due to this flooding that's happened, they've, they've stopped working on this, because they had other things that they had to work on, and they told me, this will be in September, before they're able to get back to it. The goal would be, um, town property up there is to create a mechanism, a settling pond, something that will mitigate water, clean it before it gets to any of the culverts that would run through Mr. Kearns' property. And we're not gonna change the water up there. It, well, the water's going where it's going. There's a swamp in there.
It's only going there because you built a facility and trenches to bring us to my doorstep. It never came there before you did this work.
Well, I was here, Tom, I was here five years ago, Mr. Chairman, and that area that's where it is now is, is no wetter now than it was then.
My family has been on that property every summer for the last eighty years. I've spent my childhood year there, my father spent his childhood year there. I've been on that property every day for the last thirty years since I moved to town. Luckily, my house is just two minutes away. So in the winter, before any of this happened, I would go there every day to check on the Turner camp, to check on the Sonas camp, to check on our camp, to check on the Kelly camp. So I know exactly how the water was there. There was never any water there. The town built a road and a bunch of trenches to point the water to where it's coming now. Other property owners beyond the, the town's trench have decided they can build trenches to add to that trench. It's not, it's not my business to drain Crystal Heights. All those lots could be built on, and then there's gonna be ten times more water there.
If there wasn't a water problem, why was the culvert put in leading down to the lake?
The amount of water that came through there that we put, I showed you the picture, right?
If there, I'll ask you the same question, I'll, do I have to repeat the question?
My great uncle's.
Uncle Will.
Big Uncle Leo, my great uncle, was a wet spot between his property and Lloyd Kelly's property, where he had cocktails every night.
Well, then why did the culvert go across the road?
This all predate, because we had a pipe there. But the, the, that isn't the problem, Jim, you built another road. Right? You built another road, well, I have to fix my seawall, it will not survive this winter.
The reason, as I, as I recall, the reason the loop was put in there was to allow the snowplow, so they wouldn't have, as Mike said, back out of both of those roads, and the town owned the land.
Right.
That's the reason it was put in there, to maintain the properties, more of which are being used on a year-round basis. So was it to the convenience, the convenience of the property owners that it was done? It was to help them.
If you watched the tape, the town swore to me it wasn't being connected, they were building two small turnarounds for the plow to turn around. I know, I, I never disputed that you have the right to do, to build that turnaround. What you don't have the right to do is direct all this water to my camp.
Okay.
So I have to.
Do you have a question before you, oh, sorry, I.
No.
Add a question. You all finished, Tom, or?
I thought, I thought Bob had a question.
Okay, Bob.
I, I, I want Tom to address the infiltration of the water from those ditches going into his septic tank there, because obviously, I was up there visiting, the neighbors all told me the town's alarm goes off quite regularly. Tom told me that he believes the water from that tube that goes to the lake is broken and that it's getting infiltration of water up there, and I know, Jim, you've always and opponent of finding out where all this water is coming from. Tom told me he believes the water is coming from that pipe going ready to his septic tank, so I wanted him to address to the board his concerns about that.
There aren't any septic tanks up there.
They're all, they're all on town sewer管.
You need the, the town pump. Our, our.
The town pump.
Our lot and a bunch of these other ones there have a, a small sewer.
Oh, you mean your, your.
Pump stations.
Pump stations.
Right.
All, three years ago, or four years ago, we got a letter from the water waste department saying that we now had to run our pumps year-round, whether we used them or not. That was never the case before. When I asked him at the time, why that was, and why our alarm would go off whether we were there or not, he said, because groundwater is getting into all the tanks. There's another tank on the top of the hill where you were supposed to, where the right of way really was. But because the town manager didn't have a budget or permission to do what he was doing, he didn't put it where he was supposed to be, because there's a big ledge there, and there's another sewer tank, another pump station there that takes sewage from.
Are, are you saying that the.
I'm saying.
Some of the pumps, pump stations, individual pump stations are failing?
I'm saying they're taking on.
There's infiltration?
I'm saying water gets into them.
Okay.
When they open them up.
That's a reason to inspect them.
Right.
Okay.
Now, in our case, we have that station that's taking water, and a station above us that's also taking on water, that's a more of a major station, whether it's an aqua pump there or just a connection, is running adjacent to this broken pipe that runs into the lake. So in addition to the obvious colored pollution that the town is causing, you have a, a good possibility that it's also sewage running into all the waterfront.
Do you have any water tests to support that?
I don't, it's, it's not, I didn't create these problems. Like, the town created these problems. There was no issue until this road was built, without any public discussion. So I don't know how you have to have a public discussion to change the classification of a road, but not to build a whole brand-new road. So at this point, the only way I can fix my seawall is to plug the, the pipe at the top of the thing.
Are you, are you contemplating that?
Yes.
I think I would talk to a good attorney before I did that.
I, I, it doesn't matter, it's mine.
Yes, it does.
It's mine.
Okay, if you wanna go down that road. I, I think, again, I would say to you, friendly, talk to a good attorney before you do.
I have a good attorney.
Okay.
So then, but you should watch the tape, and if you're gonna make this a road, you should do it properly. And then in that discussion, it has to be where's the water gonna go.
Okay. Have we? Pretty much.
I, I, no, I, after ten years, it was still after where we were, so I don't know.
Thank you very much, Tom, Mr. Chairman.
Joe? Yeah, so can anyone tell me when this road was built?
It's on that, it's that date right there, it was four, four or five days before that date it started being built.
And when was that, Tom? What year? Just what year?
Eleven.
Twenty-eleven?
Twenty-eleven.
So there was zero road there.
Zero, there was zero point zero anything there. This, before the road was built, and now you had to build a six-foot-wide ditch plus other ditches to take the water, again, this is the, what used to be natural recurring there. So that's why, you didn't wanna step over that bridge. You used to wear white shoes in the summer. That's the way it was, at least with Leo, you fished in white shoes. That's the, that's the natural state, or as natural as it is, it's obviously not natural, you have a seawall, but that's how much water we had to deal with, and that's why it was done. Now you need a six-foot-wide culvert that, ditch, stone-lined ditch, I mean, it's ridiculous. Okay, so you're, the town is delivering this water to that point, so if it floods the property, it's the town that delivered that water there.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, I, I had Russ go up there and inspect the grinder pump station, and it's fiberglass bottom. He's, the analysis was, there's nothing wrong with that bottom of that, that fiberglass, but the, the metal cover, um, it's rotting and needs to be replaced, they had to fabricate that, they don't make this.
Is the idea the, the guys from the sewer plant, as soon as they get a chance, inspect the rest of the individual pumps up there?
Sure. But I, I just want to follow up, because they did look at that right.
Sure, and I don't wanna say anything bad about the wastewater guys, but they're always terrific, and before we had our family reunion, they came up and they tweaked the pump to make sure it worked good, and they're always on top of it. But.
Okay, folks.
I'm happy to hear that, but it's, there's water getting in there, it's not coming in from the top, because the top is above your.
So, uh, Tom, you're suggesting, asserting that uh, town didn't follow proper process in putting this road in. Uh, what would the consequence be of abandoning it?
Then, Mike, how about winter maintenance? That's those questions, basically.
Well, I think it's obvious that we're gonna have to come to the end of the road and push snow uh, around to accommodate a turnaround, um, and build a, a place to push snow.
Do we have a turnaround at the end of the road?
No.
From north to south, from south to north?
We don't have one. And where, where we're gonna put it, on the east side, it's all wet in there, that's just, where it comes down through Alfruturby behind, and that last house, it's all wet in there. So that drainage that we're getting is coming from that area. It's not coming from rain, it's coming from that wet, swampy area. Over years, what the V-Trans engineer told me was like, it's, the whole stuff rolls downhill kinda stuff, and water's. it's, the whole stuff rolls downhill kind of stuff, and water's coming off that elevation higher on Route Thirty. And over the years, it just saturated that ground in there and it's made it wet. And that's, that's just the reality of it. And then on the other, on the west side, they plow into where Mrs. Gee lives, into that property. So it's, it's just a tight spot to put snow. But without having to do it, then they have to back out, because those driveways, a lot of them are really, really conducive to backing up a plow truck and not hitting everything in the way. So that's why the road, I'm assuming that's why the road, I was told, is for the plows.
So, Tom says we never followed the proper process before we added that road. Why are we plowing it?
No, it's, the road is used, these roads were developed as dead ends. There was, there was a plan to connect them in the very beginning, but it wasn't feasible, and so it was abandoned. Because it's a ledge, because the road technically should be further north, on the other side of the ditch. You know, if you look at the old surveys, you take the measurements, it's over twenty, thirty feet from where it should be. Technically. If the town had the fifty-foot right-of-way off the Kelly property, is what the survey said. And then down at the bottom end, it's a little bit of a wedge.
But regardless, in neither case did we follow, what, from your point of view, was proper procedure?
That's, that's where the, the, if it's a road, you did. If it's a snowplow turnaround, maybe you did. Because then you don't need a thing. You do need, you should have publicly notified the landowner that would be directly impacted by all this new water, what you wanted to do, but that didn't happen. This whole thing started, I go to the camp, and all the survey marks are re-flagged. So I, someone spent money, I know, I know all the landowners there, no one's selling or dividing, so I called the town manager. I said, "The survey marks are all flagged. What are you doing?" He said, "I'm not doing anything." He denied he's doing anything. The next day, I go back there again, and Paul's got the excavator and they're digging away, digging away. And so I said to Paul, I said, "What are you doing?" He says, "We're connecting the roads." I slipped out on Charles. I sent him a very, very nasty email. That meeting is a day or two later, and it starts off with me apologizing to Charles for my language and me asking the town what they were doing. All the rest of the select board, other than Tom and Tori, had no idea what was going on there. Tom knew what was going on there because I told him and made him go look at it. And then we had a short back and forth, and I said, "Tom, Paul tells me they're collecting, connecting the roads," and Tom assured me that they're not. Even though with my own eyes and Paul told me they were. So it wasn't any good progress. Every year, you keep improving it, and improving it means putting more ditches to bring more water to my property. Now my property is, is unswimable if it rains. And even if it's not direct sewage, it could be, you don't know what it is. People, they could be treating their lawns up there with, you know, whatever they want. It just, I don't know what other people are doing. That water never came to my waterfront. Now it does. And there is no easement to bring that water through my waterfront. So whether, if my great uncle wanted to put a pipe there, that's his business. That doesn't give the town or anybody else a right to hook up to that pipe. And when the town put the culvert under the road, because this property predates the road.
Are you saying that no one in your family gave permission for that line to go from the road down to the lake? Your uncle, great uncle Leo never gave permission for that? Do you know that?
I have to think, he put the original line in. The town, when they wanted to make improvements, wanted, said they needed to improve the line. Him and Lloyd Kelly, or I guess it was Peter Kelly at the time, Lloyd Junior, started entering into an easement agreement with the town to do that. For a couple of different reasons that never got consummated.
I would, I, just friendly suggestion, I would suggest that you try to work with the town manager.
I haven't. This has been on ten years, twelve years.
Wait a minute. The town manager has had, did you have a state engineer there?
No, I haven't been sure. I'm private.
But you had an engineer there?
Mm-hmm.
And you, and you camera the line, and you found that there's a problem in the culvert somewhere between the road and the lake? And you're trying to reach a resolution? That's, I would, cooperation sometimes is better.
I told the select board a month ago, I told Mike, Doug, Tom, I told Dave, it is not only about the pipe. I said, "We would consider signing an easement if I saw the plans and were convinced that the water was gonna be mitigated and not be flowing through my pipe like that."
That's exactly what Mike was talking about.
Except, the, the engineers, and Hillary Solomon was one of the, involved in this, because they also bring some resources to the table. And both Hillary and I have the emails from both of them saying, "We're, we're jammed up right now due to all the flooding and we're, wouldn't get back to this. It looks like September time." And if we wanted, and if we couldn't wait till then, then they recommended reaching out to someone else.
This was supposed to happen two years ago. I reached out to town, the day it got on the paving list. I reached out to the town and I said, "You have a major drainage problem at that thing, and I want to be involved because you're using my property without any kind of legal easement." At that time, I was told, right, Jim, there's no legal easement, right? Yes or no?
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't get the question right.
There is no legal easement.
In those days, you could have a gentleman's agreement, which would be a.
The letters say that that didn't happen, but anyway.
Doesn't say it isn't either.
The letters say that.
All right, let's, let's, we're getting way behind schedule, Tom. I don't, we, we hear you.
Two years ago, I was told that the engineers were gonna come in and we were gonna look at it, and that I was gonna be kept abreast of everything.
Mike, Mike just answered that for you.
But this was two years ago it was supposed to happen. And now you say maybe it's September, and now we got a pipe that's collapsed, and.
It was in conjunction with the pavement, and we didn't pay because of water problems. That's why we decided not to pay. I had V-Trans in there, looked at it and said, "You got a water problem" on the southern end of East Crystal Haven. So that's what we were trying to address, these water problems, and that's where the ditching came in at that crossroad. And it was stone-lined to catch that water that was coming. There's a culvert, I know, I use the, I'll say all this and you can't visualize it, it doesn't really mean anything. But there's a stone-lined ditch to be able to slow and kind of filter out water that comes from off the Route Thirty side. And there's a cross culvert that goes underneath that crossover road that dumps it into the middle between west and east Crystal Haven, and at the very edge, the northern edge of the, of that property, where, where that crossroad is. So you got, if you looked at it like a shape of a U, upside down U, the crossover road is the top of the U. The two main roads are the post of the U, and that, that crossover road, there's a cross culvert that goes underneath it and dumps it in between, between the U in that middle area, and runs along the ditch on the north side of it that runs down to that pipe that Tom's talking about.
Okay. Tom, we hear you. We're listening. We hope, we hope we can reach a resolution.
Who's responsible for my seawall if it collapses and went there?
I'm not the attorney. I can't answer that.
Well.
And I'd be foolish if I tried.
So then I guess that means I'm responsible for it. I guess that means I'm responsible for it because it's mine.
Can I chime in? If the town, if, if we had an easement through that property, we have to replace the culvert. Whenever we replace a culvert, if we do any kind of damage to a property, we fix it. So if the seawall was part of that damage, and we put a new, a good culvert in there, then we would be responsible to fix that. But we're replacing that, that pipe that, that we don't own, that your great, your relatives put in there. But I, we need to discharge water, so I think the, the the friendly or the neighborly thing to do is to replace the pipe and fix the seawall and mitigate the water that is running through there. And we're trying to do that, and I can't make them go any faster than what they are.
Okay. Okay. Okay, if we move on, folks? I guess so. Okay, moving on to the well at Crystal Beach. We're still on water.
Mr. Chairman, this was just something for food for thought for the, for the select board, for the future considerations. Water, right currently, currently at the beach, the town has a pump that pumps water from the lake. And that's what is used to flush toilets and sinks. We run off filters to catch, try to catch the sand, filter out the sand and stuff before it makes it up to the bathrooms. I got, I was given a number of four hundred and forty-eight dollars, I believe, for the previous year. Since then, they've switched out the filters. They're, they're using a kind of washable filter. So there's less, less cost involved. But why I'm bringing this to the board's attention is the snack shack wasn't run this year because of the two individuals that wanted to run it. We're told by the health department that they need potable water in there to be able to do anything like washing hands, cooking, et cetera. And there is not potable water that runs to it. So in the future, if it was anything to do with running that, that would be a consideration. I know someone that did run it, and they had a truck in water to be able to just do hand washing. The sink was fixed up there, so there was drainage. But the question was, does the town, would the town consider putting in a well? And I don't have the cost analysis, like how many years it would take to get back the cost of the well. And the only reason I say that is because the cost of the well is depending on how deep they go. So the more shallow, the cheaper, and I could divide numbers, you know, how much it costs for filters and the problems that we have with running water from the lake to use that. So I, I don't really have a number for you because I don't know how deep the well's gonna be. I did talk to the, what's his name?
Parker.
Justin, yeah. Up there, and the place across the road they drilled recently was about three hundred feet, but then over on Rosewood and some of the other areas around there, they were down seven hundred feet. So it's, don't really know. But as, just food for thought, I guess, if the town wants to invest in our property and put a well in, or we continue, I don't know how long we're gonna be able to take water out of the lake before somebody says that's no longer allowed. And if that becomes the case, I don't know how long I'd notice that we're gonna get that Agency of Natural Resources or DEC would make those kind of decisions, but I imagine it won't be overnight. But then we'd be stuck with, you can't flush a toilet up there.
Wasn't a lot of the camp had the same problem. You don't know a lot of camps have water coming from the lake?
I don't know how many, how many people on the lake now still have water to flush toilets. I don't really know the answer for that. But eventually, if you look at some of the stuff that A and R has been doing, it could come down the road sometime. So this is not something that has to be acted on immediately or anything. Just food for thought, to be able to open the snack bar, get that running, because the town makes revenue off that as well. And if it's not running, we make nothing.
We have any idea what our consumption is up there?
Uh, I, we don't. It's never really monitored. One of the things I was talking to Jim about was if the toilets are the older style toilets and they're using a lot more water, that those can be changed to reduce the, the amount of water being used to flush the toilets. I don't have a number for you to consider for that.
Anything else on this, folks? So you were saying that the, the depth of the wells in the area ranges from three hundred to seven hundred and fifty?
Seven hundred is what, yeah. I was talking to him, the one right across the road, they just drilled for one of our, actually one of our employees, was down three hundred feet. So that's the closest one, I guess, that's to this property. The other ones like on Rosewood, it's, the elevation of where it sits is a little, a little higher. But that's all I, that's all I really know at this point, is it could, it could be three hundred to seven hundred feet.
Do we have, does it mean to guess how far down the bedrock is, how much casing we'd need?
He told me about forty feet.
Oh, so that's not bad.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you going to explore this a little more, Mike?
I, I can certainly try to, I don't know how I'm gonna figure out the flow. That's, that's, there's no meter, so that's gonna be a little challenging there. But that's counting how many times the toilets flushed a day. I don't know how I'd do that. It's, I guess it's really about investing in this property and getting our money back on the return of the investment and be able to consider the snack shack as part of the revenue for the town as well. Because if, if you're spending, I don't know, let's see, reduce it five hundred and forty-eight down to three hundred for pumps, or I mean, for filters, and then any revenue that was being generated from that, let's just say it's anywhere from, you know, near a thousand dollars.
Could I just suggest that you also explore putting in a shallow well with filtration, ultraviolet? There are water companies that do that. And if the pump is down near the lakeshore, you can push a lot, water a lot more than you could pull it from up in the, in the, in the building. Just possibly consider that. I don't know if that would, I don't know if that would work, if it would be acceptable or not, but there's ultraviolet, there's water purification systems that are out there. As far as drawing from the lake, there is an exemption in, in the state regulations that allows anyone to put in a two-inch pipe to draw from the lake. If, you know, did you say to change that, like you said, that's possible, that could happen too?
Just, I just wanna, I will, I will look into alternate, this, this shallow well. It sounds like there's a maintenance issue with that. There could be maintenance with that one too, as far as the ultraviolet system and replacing bulbs and whatever. So I'll look into it, though.
Okay. But it just, I mean, this is reminiscent of Bob's point earlier about woodards. This is a seasonal facility. And this is a major capital investment. But it's only gonna be a benefit for the town for, what, two and a half months?
Yeah, the little beach, man?
Yeah. And by my estimate, you know, the costs are somewhere in the neighborhood of fourteen to thirty-two thousand dollars. How much would it cost to have a large tank and have it filled periodically?
Those are all things I'll look into, yeah.
I'll take the thirty-two K, Joe. I'm just curious.
Uh, well, it's forty-five dollars a foot by seven thousand, seven hundred.
Well, we're only need thirty feet of ca, forty feet of casing, so that's twelve hundred dollars for the casing, and then to drill seven hundred feet down, that's sixteen dollars a foot. You wind up with eleven-two, so my, my worst-case number was around thirteen thousand.
Okay, obviously I haven't, I haven't drilled the well.
Well, the worst-case number is around somewhere between twelve to fifteen thousand to drill a well. That's including the pump and pressure tank and all that, based on this.
You guys, you guys are talking seven hundred feet.
Yeah.
About eight ninety-five?
Well, I just said that's.
You know why I picked that number?
No, it's yours.
That's what our well is.
Mine's nine hundred.
Eight ninety-five.
Mine's eight seventy, so.
You're slop?
Mine's eight seventy.
Oh, you're, I'm still ahead of you. I'm still number one. All right.
And they have refracted too.
Okay. So we move on then. Mike is going to do some more investigating. Three bay. Three bay, unless there's some concerns. Three bay cold storage garage behind the public safety building.
Mr. Chairman, this, the plans for the fire department include the, that future building, so it was part, it was the thought, it was in the thought process back when the fires department was built, built. And I brought this, gosh, I brought this up maybe three years ago to the select board. You actually allowed carryover for money for this thing, but at the time it was 26, 28,000 dollars, and the prices have almost doubled since that point. And it was the issue with, is there wetlands? Can we do this? And it got into the, kind of in the, my quidmire stuff, and it just never, I never followed up on it, to be honest with you. Then it got resurrected again, because we're, the police department was like, our vehicles stay outside all winter, it'd be nice to be able to put two vehicles in undercover. And then when Justin came to me about all the vandalism that's been happening around the town, that it'd be nice to put these cars inside where the cameras can see the building, but the cars are on the inside of the building. And we have storage for the fire department, which their bays over there have other, the old hose cart that's in there that, that you walk behind, or you tow it or pull it or whatever, and other things. So that was, so I said, well, what about a three-bay garage? So I can turn the bay on the, on the, one of the far end into the emergency management center here, hook into this generator, not have to try to convert everything, have to spend the money up at the highway garage. The more we got into that thing, the more, what a pain in the rear end it's gonna be. So this would be a building that would be housed the town's emergency management center, that's connected to emergency power, and a storage facility for police and fire and EMS.
How many, how many towns and the city of Rockland put their cars inside at night?
Is it, is it a bad idea?
You worked at Brandon, did Brandon put theirs in?
Uh, no.
Do we know of any that does? I'm not saying we shouldn't, but.
I'll just top my head, I don't, I mean, I'm not very sure if there ain't stores there, but. Yeah, I mean, this just comes down to that whole, you know, you come in for an emergency and the cars are covered in ice and snow, and, or vandalism, they're cutting catalytic converters on things. I, I'm just taking a concept that was started 2015, 14, with the fire department, and trying to build on that and say, it's, it'd be, it'd be nice to have the facility.
Are you saying that the vandalism, vandalism of the police cars, anyone from back of this building?
No, I'm saying the concern by Officer Shereka was our, our cars are sitting outside and they're subject to vandalism, like the, the highway garage, the truck, most of them are inside, but the one that we put outside, they cut the catalytic converter off. We didn't put the truck inside the garage at the sewer plant, they cut the catalytic converter off it. So it's just a, it's a.
But you had a garage for them, you just didn't put them in?
Correct.
Here you don't have a garage.
Correct.
But you haven't had anyone steal anything of that?
Not yet, no.
Doesn't $60,000 seem like an awful lot of money?
Well, you got, we got half of it already. You've carried the money over now for three years.
But just because we have some money, isn't it a good idea?
I think it's, I, I'm asking for it. Your decision is what it is, I'm trying to defend it, and have a place to store things, have an emergency management shelter or a center in there. And it's not gonna be heated on the whole thing. There's not, there's not a reason to heat the cold stor, the two bays that are cold storage.
It's a, it's a little discouraging here to have one of them called an Epsom, and one another one called a Stuva.
You and I remember that, don't we?
I do.
So, Mike Genius came up with that naming.
There's a whole list of different buildings, and they're all old classic car models, for the different model, model names of the buildings.
And this price of, call it 59,000, does not include paintings, staining, plumbing, electrical work, site prep, or site prep?
Well, one of them is, is the, oh, God, I'm email farming. One of them is, is, the one here is vinyl sided. Vinyl soffit, roof overhangs, the cable ends, they put it out so it doesn't, the stone doesn't fall directly to the floor. It, it comes with a pad, they put it in place. Vinyl hung windows, I'm looking where it said, the vinyl siding is here somewhere.
Epsom's the one with the vinyl siding and the vinyl siding.
How much? Have you any idea what it would cost with the other things that are not included in the package? I mean, what would the total be? Do you have a ballpark on that, Mike?
Well, it says no painting, staining, plumbing, electric work, or site preparation included, so the, the site preparation will be on the town. I don't see this until next year anyway. There's no way we can get it done before the fall, before winter. And the electrical and plumbing that we can do in-house.
In-house?
Yeah.
We have?
Russ is a cert, has a license for.
Electrical?
Yeah. So the only thing that I would ask that the, we have a licensed attrition, that's not a town employee, come in and make all the connections in the box, make sure that those are done correctly.
Shall I ask my question? Where are you gonna get the money?
Well, that's why I'm here.
That's not an answer.
I don't know. So I, I have to go back and look, but I think it was 28,000 that was in the budget from carryover, and the remainder would be if you decide to allow this to cook on the back burner, and look at what we have for surplus, or you, they go for the voters, and they, right now, we're looking at about 100 and, 189,000 surplus, budget surplus, after all the resolutions are applied to the surplus for this year, so that could be another one. You could use ARPA funds, that's, those are the majors. So I guess I'm not looking, I'm not looking for the board to make a motion on it tonight, but I wanted at least see if it's in the realm of, would you entertain it?
Sure.
And then, what's that?
I will.
Okay, thank you. And, go from there.
Yes, he asked.
Yeah, I'm not saying anything, I'm just chuckling. Okay, so you're not looking for anything tonight, so we'll chew on it and come back?
Yeah, is there anything that the, that the board members would like for information?
Yeah, I'd like to know what the total would be, what, what you will be able to estimate, you know, what the, the package is costing? With all the, with the other things that are not included, what would you estimate, guesstimate, the total would be?
What else could you use this money on, besides this?
Well, you carried over the, basically, I don't think we could use the 28 for, you already made the resolution for a specific purpose, so that you couldn't use that money for something else.
But what about the, the surplus or whatever, that could be used anywhere, it doesn't have to use the Epsom?
It's up to the select board, if you, if you choose to bring something before the voters, or you choose to let it stay in the general fund and carryover to help reduce tax rate the next year, that's up to the board.
Okay. Anything else on this? Bob, you have anything on it?
No, I'm good, I've heard enough.
Okay, I've heard, okay, bye. All right, then we'll move on to EBS, document, balance of documents to be digitized, determine how to fund, how much do we need?
5702. So that 5702 is, is representative of the documents that, that are left over after they took, a large pile of them right now, 50 boxes, and that maxed out the $16,000 that we had. So to finish up the documents, minutes, some minutes of meetings upstairs is, that's the number that we require to complete the job.
5,702?
Okay.
Not 57,000?
Not this, you voted, originally it was a higher amount, we only had 16,000, so you authorized that, so that's the work they're doing right now. And then after we took all those boxes and what was left over and said, we don't need to do those, we need to do that, you know, kind of statutory things, or minutes of meetings, that's what was left over.
So what do we get for 5702?
It's always a standard answer. It's always the standard answers, the piggyback that Joe said. Now, the, you can use ARPA funds on it, because that's one of the reasons it was designed, was for public good like that. And that's, or I wait and see where we end up with the budget towards the end of the year.
We need the surplus?
Yeah. And then say, carry, try to carry some of that money over, but that's, those are the two real things I can think about about it.
Is there a motion?
Well, this is underway right now?
This, the first 50 boxes are underway, the 16,000 that's already been obligated is underway, this is, this would round out the remaining boxes that we have upstairs.
How much did we pay for what we shipped out so far?
That was, that was through budget surplus from the, from previous year, you authorized?
So the, they're presently working on 50 boxes. This proposes to work on an additional 18 to 26.
No.
Eight boxes?
Eight to 16, eight 16-inch boxes, and 20,000 images, and then 10 boxes, loose sleeve
So is it just 18 boxes for 5702?
I'm looking, I didn't do the bid, so I apologize.
Well, they're talking about 32,800 images, so that's in the 18 boxes. And then 100 maps of 24 by 36, at $2.49 a map. It's on page 12, Joe.
Right, that's what I've did, right there.
I'm looking at, on page 10 of 13, at the tops is documents to be scanned. 18 16-inch boxes full, eight ZBA, approximately 20,000 images, 10 boxes containing 55 loose sleeve binders, approximately 13,000, 800 images, and board minutes, other, and other, and then large format maps, approximately 124 by 36 maps, all been folded.
Are you telling us that 5700 will completely, you just put it on computer?
Digitize?
For everything? Thank you. This, our whole, whole system will be easily accessible?
Yes, minutes of meetings and zoning records, all the, the parcel files. What's not included is, are things like receipts that are up there from 25 years ago that aren't required to stay on file. We have them, but legally, some of it's, statutorily, some of the stuff isn't required, we're just holding on to it. So this will cover the stuff that's, that says we're supposed to do, not the stuff that we would maybe like to.
Basically, it will cover everything that we wanted it to from the beginning?
I think that's an accurate statement, yes.
So, you know, Tom brought us a recording. Obviously, this is new technology, doesn't go back many years, but is there a way of integrating such recordings into the system?
I have to ask that question.
It's obviously a different question from your proposal to scan hard copy documents, but if we're talking about giving citizens access to important town information over the last, how many years have you been recording these meetings for us?
Before I was doing it, which I haven't been doing it that long, but.
I think that's a, at least a dozen years.
Yeah, maybe 15, maybe more.
Yeah.
So what specifically would you be asking that they, they could do?
Well, I mean, now when you send out minutes, you often include a link to the recording. Seems to me that should be folded into this e-business collection of important documents. And maybe it doesn't have to be them doing it, maybe it's something that Karen did. But I guess I would at least ask the question, is there a system designed to include links to recordings related to specific town meetings?
Well, I, I will answer kind of some of your questions. We have the ability locally to download the recordings onto media devices, like external hard drives, stuff like that.
But we're gonna be pushing people towards this new system?
Correct. I don't know about links, because links can be broken, and I have to ask a question. So, yes, but I'll ask the question.
So there's another question that occurs to me, which Joe Lake found work foundation for, that we have several decades of audio recordings of select board and certification meetings, et cetera. Are those, is there any plans on digitizing any of those eventually?
I have to ask the question of whether those are no longer, if they're still available, because when we called the Secretary of State's office, there's, once the minutes are done, legally, you don't have to keep the recording anymore. So some of those older cassette tapes that we had may not even be in existence anymore.
Fair enough.
Anything else? Is there a motion on the 5702?
Well, except for the fact that we haven't decided where we're gonna get this money, I'd be prepared to make a motion. Well, I would move that we authorize the town manager to contract with the e-business docs corporation to complete the scanning needed to populate that collection with all the relevant and important town documents that have been identified. For a total of 5,702 dollars, the source of which will be determined at a later date.
In a second, perhaps?
In a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, indicate by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Emergency management shipping containers.
This is another one of those cans that was, been kicked down the road for a while. I finally found a company that is in Vermont that is reasonably priced, I guess, for these shipping containers that we deliver them. So it was out of Rattleboro, and this money's already been obligated, the select board's already obligated the money in previous years. So I just found a place that would actually fit into that budget. So one of these would go down to the American Legion to store all of the gear for the emergency shelter, blankets, cots, there's tents, there's food and things, there's power cords and, you know, a whole bunch of, of stuff that we, we've collected. And they're rodent-proof, they're weather and windproof, Legion is all on board with it. And then the other one would go up to the, for right now, would go up to the town garage where the emergency operations center has been kind of earmarked for, which I, as I stay, I don't like it up there, but, that's, these are, these are, containers are movable, so if that ever changes in the future, they can be moved around, they could end up back down here.
What do they have about size?
They're 20-foot by 8-foot containers with double-end door that are lockable, and we can move with the forklift, on the forks on the, on the loader, so we can move them around internally. But when they deliver them, they, they put them in place.
Mike, what's gonna be stored in the one up to the down garage?
All the stuff for the EOC itself, the emergency operations center?
Okay, I thought you put them over there for the one that's in there for each?
That's for the emergency, that's for the shelter, the blankets and cots and food, utensils and shaving or hygiene kits, all the stuff we have for that. The stuff up there is gonna be. The stuff up there is going to be the stuff that outfit the emergency operation shelter. Because if I, right now, we're supposed to build it above the bay, above the garage, the second floor of the garage. If anybody's been up there this summer, it's very, very hot and we don't have any air conditioning. But that was the, we didn't have a place to go. I think the board made a motion where you didn't want to use the village school as the EOC, so the garage was like the next place to go, where we could put emergency power. We have a generator, so it's just a storage, it's a storage vessel for all of that type of stuff. And we have a GP medium tent that the guard gave us, it's brand new, and we can put that in there because right now it's in the shed, the transfer station, and Chris has been begging us to get it out of there because he can't get anything else in there to include himself.
Pardon?
But, so this was all, this was all kind of preordained, this has been on the, in the works for a while. It's just, I couldn't find something that, it was costing more to ship the container, or just as much to ship the container it was to buy the container. So I found this place in Rattleboro that.
So this is a purchase?
Yeah.
And this is delivered, a delivered price?
Correct. And put in place, so they put it where we, we asked them to put it.
I'll make a motion, we authorized the town manager to purchase two shipping containers for emergency management and emergency shelters for, with MTG Holdings LLC for three thousand three hundred dollars.
Second discussion?
What was the price? Is that the price of one or two?
You know, you're pricing for.
Yeah, they're thirty-three hundred each.
Oh. Two, let me amend my motion to, for a total cost of six thousand six hundred dollars.
Could you say the, could you say the name of the company again, please?
MTG, that's Mike Tango Golf Holdings LLC.
Thank you.
Can we have a second discussion? If not, I'll hold the favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
This is just a follow-on comment related to the comment I made earlier. I think when we acquire these materials and put them into storage, we need to have probably at least an annual process of checking on them. Because some of this stuff is going to deteriorate and be replaced. We don't want to find that out when we have an emergency.
Now, food?
No, there's no food, there aren't.
Must be.
Anything else on this?
Who's giving the shop life on MRE, so?
When you get through, Mike, it's up, I guess it's the manager's report.
Subject to your questions. I don't, there are some pretty, pretty important things in there, I'm not sure if you want to talk about any of them.
If they're important, we should be talking about it.
I think the big ones. The stormwater mitigation for the salt and sand shed. I did a follow-up, I got an email back, I didn't have it at the time I wrote this, but I did, I got it afterwards. That grant will be opening to get that additional two hundred thousand dollars in September timeframe. So that's the one we have to apply for to get the additional two hundred, it's a cap of five hundred total. So we've already been awarded three hundred, we applied for the other two hundred, that gives us five hundred thousand. And I tasked the new highway foreman and DPW director to work with this company that they started work, Brent Clark started working with, to try to get some costs associated with building this salt and sand shed based upon building construction that's suitable for our climate, our area, geographical area of the world. It's no, it's no loads. So they'll work on that and try to get some prices for you at the upcoming meeting. But that's, I don't think we're going to, I don't think we're going to, I know we're not going to be able to go ahead with the project unless we either, if we don't get that two hundred thousand without the select board having to authorize monies from elsewhere to do it, because that's a substantial amount of money.
Maybe instead of the snow, we ought to think of wind and rain.
So it's.
And have as much snow as we're.
Yeah, it's, these are, the one, the company that we're looking at builds, started building these in Wisconsin and Minnesota. So they were used to the harshness and the climates and snow and stuff like that. But they're a fabric that goes over it to keep, it's semi-permual, air, I'm not sure water outlets can get through it versus air.
Are you talking similar in Santa Rutland, there's a guy that sells food and he has this great big thing over there?
I, I know what you're talking about.
Is that what you're talking about or something similar?
Be, a beefier version of that, the way the trusses and stuff are formed, they come down on blocks like his is over there. But the, when I can see from the road, I've never inspected that one you're talking about. But it seems like that's a little more lightweight than what, what we'd be looking for. The Granton Aid project, on page two, paragraph D, Granton Aid. The project, we're almost completed actually on Griffin Road, we ran into some problems again with trees. We're going to wait, we'll wait for a quote to be able to take down a tree that's in the ditch line and is causing the water to kind of pool up there and then jump the road. But that's a grant project and it's a twenty-seven thousand dollar grant. We've already, my estimate, by looking at the paperwork that we have so far, so we've already met our town match by in-kind work, but we're not going to eat up the twenty-seven thousand dollar grant. So I've asked the state if we could pick other road segments out that we could bring up to standards that are now don't meet or partially meet. And they've said, yes, you will entertain that, and they sent us some, some forms to fill out and then they'll come down and inspect what we want to finish. But that's, I want to maximize the grant, is what my point there was. We did receive, I'm on page three, Better Roads Grant, we received our reimbursement for the full eighteen thousand dollar grant amount there. And that, that was for Eaton Hill West, and that project was completed. The ongoing saga with this concrete walls of the transfer station, just kind of go by that one because I don't really have a logical reason why. The roll-off truck, this one, this one got me just a little bit concerned, or a lot concerned, actually. I was asked to have a second opinion on that truck after all this hunting and wasting of, or not wasting, time committed to it. Someone mentioned to me that drove that truck, said, maybe we should have a second opinion. So we had a second opinion, some central Vermont truck repair. And they believe that it will pass inspection. So I've got two conflicting inspection reports, one says it can't be, one says it can be. And so now we're at this point where I've got to make a decision on which way to go. And certainly rather not buy a new truck if we can, use so, get this one inspected and safe. I guess maybe there could be a difference in someone's mind of, hey, it's inspectable, but is it safe? Well, that's what the inspection's for, is they're not supposed to inspect it if it's not safe. So I'm working through that one, I wanted to let you know where I was at. And it's just frustrating that we're at, we're at this point and we've been paying hovers to haul trash for us and maybe it wasn't even needed in the very beginning. I'm under, still on page three, personnel. We lost a full-time employee to resignation and we had interviews today and we found a really good candidate that the committee members, which consisted of myself, Jeff, and Chris Horace, think would be a great asset to our, to our team. So I'll be following up with a letter, conditional letter of hire. But as you know, we're going in, sometime we'll be going into contract negotiations, ask me. But I'm still at that, that point where the wage that's in the ask me contract is a little prohibitive. So I don't, I'm not sure what's going to happen, but we're going to make an offer to this individual. Without, without that, and there's some second and third order effects of all this. If I don't find someone to work up there that's capable of doing all the stuff that we ask, we run the risk again of having to pull members of the highway department or the sewer wastewater plant to be at the transfer station, especially in the weekends, to help run it. And then we're paying overtime for one, but two, we're asking people to cover down on another department and it's, it's not just a, it wouldn't be just a one weekend, it's going to be until we can fill it. And our track record hasn't been that good with finding qualified people to take the jobs. So if, when I find someone that's qualified to take it and has, seems like it'd be a really good member of our team, I want to, I don't want to let it linger and then not have somebody in, my dream's going to be gone here shortly. And that means that we are back to only one person at the transfer station. And there are other folks that are out there right now who are not trained on the new system. So we have, we have to pull them into training, Chris needs to be able to take vacation if he calls in sick. I just don't want to be at a disadvantage without having a second person. So we'll see what happens when I make the conditional offer. I'm under, on page four, four B, sewer infrastructure. And we've kind of like been strung along with this Sucker Brook pump station generator, the install. It's been now pushed off three times. And we've got a kind of general date that the parts will be in and we'll be able to do this work towards the end of August. So we're back at, that point is if there's a power failure, we don't have a generator there, our generator there, so we're going to end up having to bring in pump trucks to keep the pump station down. Trying to get away from that. We saw the inspection, the gravity, the sewer lines, we've already approved that. Talked about the expansion of the sewer. Paving, I'm on page six, paragraph five, paving. We did need the temporary, so we're looking at any, we're looking at some milling starting next week possibly. Get the roads milled that need to be milled and then working, then working into the paving. But they want to get the milling done first, which affects North Road primarily and the village school, that front parking lot. And South Streets. There's one portion of South Street, so that's, that stuff needs to get done before we can move on with the paving. I'm on page six again, under five C, equipment, the grader. After I typed this the other day, I spoke with a representative from Milton Caterpillar today and they'll have the grader in by the end of the week to assess the brakes, the transmission, and the replacement of the shims and parts on the moldboard. And we need to get that thing back sooner rather than later. Because we still have roads that haven't been touched in a while with grading. So I asked the gents from the highway to reach out to our mutual aid partners in Brooklyn County to see if anybody has a grader that we can borrow so we can get, we don't let this stuff go any longer than we have to. Because I don't know how long it's going to take them to fix this thing. I'm on page seven now, E, state highways. I came to the select board probably multiple times or said something multiple times over the last year or so about they're going to pave from Fairhaven to West Rutland on Route four A. And I met with this Vtrans and DuBois and King, and they're only, the only thing they knew about was the class one section from Sam Hill to the other end, the east end of the village. And I asked them about, what about the West Rutland, the Fairhaven thing, and they're like, nothing about it. So I reached out to, an email to Devin Neary and Ethan Peppin from the Regional Planning Commission and said, you guys have been touting this thing for, gosh, two years or so, what's the deal? So I don't really, haven't heard back from you yet, but we know that in May, or, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-five is when they're scheduled to resurface that section of class one road. And I went through the process and what they do and what they don't do, and nothing scary or kind of out of the ordinary. It's two inches, they mill out two inches back, they bring the utilities up to a half inch below grade. They asked about curbing, if curbing had to be fixed, and we want it painted, you know, all these questions, which I told them no. And, but after, I went to a meeting about this, May ninth of two thousand twenty-five is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of Ethan Allen in town before they, prior to the raid on Taicona Roga. And they are planning some event then, and so I told them, let me find out a little bit more about this schedule because you don't want to be in the middle of a paving project and have three thousand people. There was three thousand people we castled in, allegedly, or said in the papers, in the last, nineteen seventy-five, when they did their last celebration for this.
Seventeen seventy-five.
Yeah, no, not seventeen seventy-five. But, so that's something I need to follow with, I'm on, but that's, that's a little bit ways away, but. Time seems to go by pretty fast. The highway garage, I'm on page eight, B, highway garage. This weekend, they've started working on the painting of the building. And we spoke today, there's a guy from over at Door at the office today. And they're going to have those doors installed. They said, we got an opening this Thursday and Friday, if you do it after that, you're probably talking November. So I said, go ahead, but when you paint the damn building, make sure the doors are up so you're not overspraying green paint onto white new doors. So we'll handle that internally. But, so it looks like the doors will probably be installed Thursday or Friday, Thursday and Friday. Town office, I'm on nine, I started pressure washing the town office and found some holes and we're going to replace some siding, but we have the stuff upstairs and I got somebody that wants it, they'll take it on. So we get those fixed and I'll finish the building at some point. The police department hired someone to do theirs, and I said, give me a quote. And they, they pressure washed the whole police department and this gable end of the fire department. So I said, give me a quote, because I was out there, I did it myself. I took the whole day and I got the front of the town office and three quarters of the north side, still got more to do. Okay, where's the man in there? No, there's the stuff up at the garage, stuff that was part of that grant that we received. Assistant, I spoke with Julie Fisher from, I'm at the bottom, page ten, nine B. Julie Fisher from Lexington, they're willing to submit, resubmit the grant application, which included the air refill station, but when she emailed me back today, she said that the reason they could do that was they could do it under PPE, personal protective equipment, as an add-on to the SCBA, and the board's approved the SCBA using ARPA. So I can't tag the air, the air station, refill station onto the SCBA. So she's going to work and see what else would be eligible to get on there. And I talked to the chief about what else would they need under a grant, thermal cameras or whatever. So working through that one with those folks. I'm on page twelve, town lands, the Crystal Ava Common Area. It's almost Labor Day, so you know, that's, that whole, starts in Memorial Day and ends on Labor Day. But we sent a letter to a resident who decided to put a dock in where they're not supposed to, put a boat there and kind of. and kind of tell the folks that have been making, remember there's a group up there that said they would be watchdogs? Basically told the watchdogs, yeah, go away. So we sent a letter to them about removing it. I talked to the chief about what we can do and it really isn't a criminal matter, so. Something we gotta work to.
I had a question about that.
Yeah.
So this person put in a dock on somebody else's spot.
Correct. They have their own spot, they just like.
I understand. Why is that not?
Theft. I, I don't, I don't know that, when I talked to the chief and Jim was standing there when I talked to him, it didn't seem like he was, had anything to offer about how he could criminally charge someone like that.
So, I mean, if, if I, if I owned that spot and you claimed it.
They don't own it, but they do have an agreement against for it. What I, what I wanted to find out too, and it may come back to this, is possibly the person that put the dock there knows the person that has the other one and they don't use it and said, yeah, you can put it there. It doesn't seem likely, but.
I mean, if, if, if the justice is right and literally anybody can camp on anybody's needed access, you know, waterfront, we'll have chaos.
I agree, and that's why I just want to find out what we can do legally. I mean, besides us sending a letter saying, you have an agreement, you signed an agreement, you're not adhering to the agreement, get out of there, go back to your space. And what else we can do, maybe have, you know, we, we've taken stuff from up there that was abandoned, stolen actually. We've been sitting up there for years, that was a stolen trailer. Um, and they ran it, it came back stolen and we got it out of there, the police did. But I'm not sure about this one, I need some, I need some help on this one as far as what we can do. So more to follow, I guess, on it. Park and Ride, Utility Pole was put in and the Garden Club. So a shout out to Doc Dirksen, who, if you see the front of the town office and how nice that landscaping looks there, that was Doc Dirksen who did that. And then the Garden Club, which included Doc Dirksen, did the Park and Ride here.
By the way, this is not our property, but someone anonymously has been doing a beautiful job taking care of gardens at the elementary school.
Yes. Gorgeous. I don't know if you see it.
Pete might have gone up there.
Yeah, well, the, the Garden Club may have been doing some of this stuff too. She did, or, I'm sorry, Bo had mentioned that, like 11 projects around town or something, so it could have been more than once.
Are we going to properly thank Dr. Dirksen and the Garden Club?
I don't know exactly what properly thanks me, but I think I can assume what you're, you're saying. We, we did talk about getting some gift cards.
Okay, some gift cards too.
I don't have a, I don't have an expense budget like that, so it's usually out of Mike's pocket. Unless you have other means of, I mean, I don't have an expense account to be able to do this stuff.
Sometimes a sincere message on a card could be.
Yeah. It's, oh, I thanked him up and down in a, in a public meeting too, at the Lions Club. But yeah, we did, we need to do something a little more formal, recommend him, I guess. Line painting, I'm on page 13, 11B, line painting. It, we're almost at the end of the damn summer here and we still don't have the, the lines painted all around town. And I just, I was talking with Dave today and Jeff, I'm like, it's almost to a point where I don't want to do it. Or hold the money, have the money held over, cause it automatically rolls over in the Highway Department and do it next year. Cause now we're gonna do it and we're just facing winter.
But you don't do any good anyway. Today I was coming in from Holland and I saw three people from a crosswalk stop. But they were in front of Birdseye and didn't even bother to come to the crosswalk. So why paint? They're gonna go where they want anyway.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's probably not the right thing to do, but I, there, there are some things that need to be, need to get done, but I'm not sure of all of it. And some of the money that the board approved was for line, parking lines. But when they resealed these parking lots, those lines were originally included, but in, in these painting by K5, now they don't need to be done because it was included in the bid for the resealing. So there are some things that don't need to get done now. But the, the roads that get paved, like South Street, North Road, those we need to put the center lines, the fog lines and stuff in. But do we need to do every stop bar or those type of things? I'm starting to question whether or not we do that in the spring and get them on, on our docket to be up here first thing in the spring and get it done. Like those are gonna be a crosswalk at, at Woodard Marine. Well, in a few days, there won't be any boats at Woodard Marine, so I'm not sure what the crosswalk's gonna do in the winter. So just kind of my thinking on it, unless you have something else you want to add to it. The Storm Rider runoff at the bottom of page 13, that's what Mr. Kearns was talking about. Oh, this one's pretty dumb down, Mr. Kearns, I'm sure, sorry. About 13. Oh, look at the, the back page, uh, 14.
I thought for a second you were going back to the beginning.
No, I, I could do that if you like. Problem trees. Spoke today again with Jeff and Dave and they're working with Tom Johnson from Trees Incorporated. And they're gonna go on our roads, the worst roads that we have that have nuisance or problem trees. And I'm trying to get an estimate of what it would take to rectify that situation and come back to the board with some number. I don't even know what that's gonna look like yet. I gave some basic guidance and said, if you see a tree and you know that you're gonna be clearing it out of a road this winter with a chainsaw, cause it falls over, cause of a heavy snow load, you might want to address that now. Rather than at two o'clock in the morning, you need a call out or, or windstorm or something like that. So I gave some, some broad guidance and have them come back to me with what roads it is, what priority, what's the priority and the cost associated with it.
I don't know if there's a resident that lives on Pine Street that approached me by the street across from his garden. Up a very far end of Pine Street. He claims it's gonna take down power lines and carry the power and it's pretty close on its way out. So you might want to put that one on your list of things to look at.
Well, one of the, apart that.
I'm willing to be an expert and I'm not, you know, not one to judge how accurate his estimate is, but.
Part of this, the guidance today was that if it's in power lines or near power lines, then get, when you finish your assessment, keep track and take pictures of where they are, get ahold of Green Mountain Power and go all around with one of their reps and they'll tell us if it's their response, they'll take it down or not. They've been, they were reluctant to do it a couple of years ago, but after the winter storm last year right before Christmas, if you notice this spring, they had Aspen Wall out all over this town, cotton trees, I mean, not just our town. Cause they figured out that it's better to be proactive than be out in the middle of snowstorms repairing stuff. So change a little, change of philosophy, but we'll, we'll get a list of those trees that are near power lines and we'll reach out to Green Mountain Power and see what they can do. Any other questions?
Green Mountain Power took a big one down from my house a few years ago.
They've been pretty good with stuff that's really kind of like near the, in the power lines. But if it's kind of close to the power lines, then their philosophy was, will deal with it when it falls.
A maple in front of Jimmy Roberts' mom's house, he's a candidate for that.
Well, that big south maple is in front of my house, that's 90% bad. They approached me and said they needed to cut that one down, did I have a problem with that? And I said, no.
Well, there's one on Main Street, a huge tree, but our right of way is 50 feet from the center line. This was 52 feet from the center line. And I'm like, I know we're gonna split hairs, but if we did that, started doing that, the cost of this tree is, it's huge. It's gonna be quite expensive. And we started doing that and said, oh, it's only 51 feet and the cost would certainly go up.
I'm gonna draw the lines on that.
Yeah. That'd be concluded, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike. Moving on to purchase orders for approval. We have two, I believe.
I'm ready when you are.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve purchase order number 050524 to London Dodge Ram for repair work on, I didn't see a specific.
Dodge Ram.
Uh, Dodge Ram pickup for $3,018 and a name of two cents.
Second?
I have a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a question, Jim.
Sure.
Jim?
Yeah, Bob.
Oh, what year, what year is this Dodge 5500? Do they need the brake one already?
This was a recall.
Really new?
It was, yes, it is. It's a two years, maybe one or three years old. It was a recall and what we found out was they voided our warranty because we used off-road diesel in the truck. Normally this would have been covered under warranty, but because we used off-road diesel, they voided our warranty and we, none of us knew that that was gonna happen. So we do now, but. What's that?
That's not a few, uh, Mike, I have to, what, what's wrong with the brake line on it?
I, I don't know, Bob. It was a recall, I'm not sure what they were recalling.
Okay, the other question I have about this, are we having these vehicles underfooted?
Yes. Through.
We are.
Through Carreras. Last year was the, I, I required it last year, so it was the first year that this was required, so we got it done last year.
Okay, I did, usually when you replace a brake line, it's because it's rusted, but, okay. This one is.
Okay. Any other questions on this? The doc, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, do we have one more?
Uh, make a motion to approve purchase order number 050692 to QW, QW Derpy for Fire Department roof repair on the Public Safety Building for $3,880.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second, discussion. You want to be first, Mike?
Uh, well, whatever, the select one member has it all week. So this, this was the repairs to the ridge cap. And since then, we, our, we had an insurance claim I filed on it and the adjuster came down and saw that there was nails poking up through that were not from the ridge cap. And said, nails coming through the roof from the decking on the roof, the sheathing of it, is probably not gonna be covered under insurance. So that comes back to whether it was a workmanship, craftsmanship issue, did they use the right materials? We don't know yet. And I, I talked to the chairman and I'm like, I, I have to get this thing fixed. I made that call to get Seth in there to strip that valley out of there so we can find out what's going on before winter gets here. And we'll find out what the, we'll find out what the cause of it is. But if we have nails coming up through plywood that's holding the stuff down in that spot, what's next? And that's a, that building was built in 2015? Fifteen?
Sounds about right.
Yeah, fifteen. So that shouldn't be happening. And so we have to make a decision at that point, I guess, where to go with approaching the contractor and it's been so many years now that I'm not sure how that's gonna work. I'll work through it with, with legal and what, we gotta find out the real issue. Look, look what's going on out there to get the, cause whatever the cost is, if it's covered by the insurance claim, all but a thousand dollars is deductible. They're trying to get this ridge cap included, so we already meet a deductible amount. But that's just the outside. Then we got the inside that, or the sheet rock was start falling from the ceiling and the apparatus, they have the fire department and the insulation and everything else. So there's more costs associated with, with that water damage on the inside building. So more to follow, we're working through it, but want to get this done before inclement weather.
Mike, turn?
Yes.
I, I have serious concerns that we have a roof on this building that's only been on eight years and we already have a problem with it. And they, and this building was being constructed. A reputable roofer in the area said, you're gonna have a problem with that roof. And we're having it. Eight years? Unacceptable. Somebody dropped the ball somewhere. That's my comment. We, we have a motion, is there a second?
We think I've seconded it.
You did, oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 On to the warrants.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number 0727 for $7,845.58. Warrant 0810 for $58,090.13. Warrant 0814 for $232,611.88. Warrant 0727P for $23,247.57. Warrant 0803P for $23,413.64. And warrant 0810P for $23,828.81.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead. Any discussion? Say no, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Will we go that way?
Sure.
Okay, there you go.
I would move that we approve warrant number 0728P for $641.32. Warrant 0804P for $641.32. And warrant 0810P for $641.32.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a second, any discussion?
I refuse myself.
You refuse yourself. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 It hasn't rained since yesterday. Did it rain here yesterday? Didn't long for it when I was down there.
It rained hard up at the beach. One of the hardest rains I've been in in years.
It was a Sunday night or Monday, Saturday night, Sunday morning, we got that fast. Well, it's according to your mention, I hear.
I was looking at the radar and I was thinking of Mr. Chairman over there because the big purple, dark purple area was right above the north end of the lake where it said hail and everything.
We went like this, Mike, and it went away.
You're talking about yesterday?
No, we, we, we got something. There's, there's a couple of trees down on the road, the power was out in about five or six hours. Got these?
I have a head of that. Last line.
Let me revisit the noise ordinance that's on file?
Yeah, we've been working on that with, with Jim Thomas. And Pete, and we talked to Chief Mattel about it as well. He was gonna, Chief Mattel was gonna do some stuff on this decibel thing. I had, I had followed up a little bit. But, do you remember the conversation Zone Administrator was having about that? I heard him talking to somebody about it. He was on the phone talking to someone.
The chief was talking about 70 decibels or something like that. That's what he was talking about, he was gonna research tomorrow.
Yeah, he said he was gonna call some towns and see if they had any ordinances that we could take a peek at.
I heard Pete been up there on, in that area, I'm driving Sunday night to see if it's still. Very loud.
I haven't heard about the complaints, I know they've been busy with a lot of the rest. I know they've been busy with a lot of rest. Burglaries in progress, busy.
So Joe, was that under our review over there or?
I think so. So I'm going to watch this and if anyone else is interested, I'll stick it in the box.
If you would, please.
Yeah. Put it in your computer.
Joe, you missed one.
Can you put it on your computer?
Yeah.
One of my three.
Maybe he's going to call me and tell me, tell me I got some gift cards.
Those should be.
No, was that Amy on the phone?
No, I haven't used them. Not for a while. Yeah, totally, thanks, Ray.
Any select board comments or concerns?
Yes.
One.
One I should have given before as a, as a citizen. I also got a deer because not, our road has not been moved yet. And it came up through the cornfield and there it was. And the other thing is, any more information on the Hubbardton Bridge?
What I got today from Jeff was the engineer, I thought was, there was an engineer, I misspoke. It was not an engineer, it was just one of the bridge folks. Came down and looked at it and said, filled the concrete and there's a, basically what they said was water, water had been getting down through the seam and over time had eroded away and then just the last heavy rains just kind of more exposed it. But they're saying there's no compromise. The bridge isn't compromised, the structural part of the bridge, but the decking needs to have some concrete put in there. So our, our folks are the ones that are doing it.
So it didn't have anything to do with the, all the rain and the water and whatnot, but it just stopped?
The last, what it sounds like I got was the last storm just kind of exposed it, but they'd been undermining it for a little bit and it finally collapsed a piece of pavement down in there, so that's what, but the assurance was that it didn't structurally impact the bridge. It's on the outside of the bridge where the road meets the bridge, on the edge of, on the edge of it. So they're saying no compromising to the structure.
Anything else, Mary Lou?
No.
That's it. Dick?
I'm good.
You're good. Joe?
I'm good.
I was asked to ask the board if you would consider the August 28 meeting for just signing warrants. I understand that may pose some problems.
Why?
Not my problem. I'm not creating the problem.
I don't even want it.
Maybe because there's so much, why what?
Why do you want it just for that specific thing? Why not a regular meeting?
I did, I'm not.
Can I speak to this, Jim?
Please, Bob, I'm hoping for your help.
I just wanted to ask the board, it's something we've done every year for many, 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 many years. And we did it last year for 12, 13 or 14 different items got put on that night. I'm just wondering if you guys have talked about that, doing it, just taking the one meeting a year off and doing just warrants. Maybe it's not possible, but it always has been for many, many years. I just want you guys to think about that.
You know that.
I'd be in favor.
We did it last year.
If you're not going to harm the town, I'd be in favor.
Mike? Why are you looking at me like that, Mike?
You're dragging me into your spider web. I, I think that in theory, I think it's, you know, why not? But every time we come around to this, the, the things that end up on the agenda are the things that if we don't act on it, it's another month by time, or another two weeks, I should say. That stuff doesn't get acted on. Sometimes that doesn't work out for timing wise because business doesn't stop because of one meeting. And that, that seems to be, that's always good in theory, but it never works out very well that we can't, there's some things we just can't wait on. And, but I could try to minimize it. I certainly can, I don't say, that is really, that can wait till the next meeting. But there's things on there that, like how suddenly we get a, something that needs to get acted on, like a bid or, you know, because of timing, like the, if we don't have the, say something expires, a quote expires and we got to have action on it or something like that. I'm spitballing here, but there may be something that has to be on there. I just, I would say I would try to minimize it, but that's, no, that's what I can try to do.
Is that a reasonable compromise?
I'm not opposed to trying to.
Absolutely. If you're asking me, Jim, absolutely.
Okay, Bob.
We're already, we're already over an hour tonight, folks, you know.
Other comments?
Just a quick one. We, this was started by Mark Shea, oh, probably what, six or eight years ago? And we tried it and it never really worked because there was always something that we had to do. I'm totally in favor of trying to have a bridge meeting or a short meeting, but to say that we're only going to do warrants is probably not realistic.
That's why I asked why.
That's my comment, because we've tried this before and it never really worked because we wound up, there's always something to add to that.
I think Mike was talking about a compromise where it would be a streamlined meeting.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Only those things that are necessary. Is that agreeable to the board?
Yes.
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 So with that said, are there other comments? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Nobody wants to.
I think, well, I'll second the discussion. You can't discuss a motion to.
Okay. You can. Mike, do we need an introductory petition?
My opinion is we should at least have a brief discussion on the OSC contract.
I don't think that's going to be a grief, but.
Well, if we're not going to do it on the 27th and we're not working out until September, I don't think that's a good idea either. And we have a full board here, Mike.
Well, I'm prepared to offer my thoughts about the contract.
I have just a couple of quick comments on it, but I'm prepared to offer those as well.
So would you be willing to withdraw your motion?
All right.
I mean, I'm hungry, but.
Okay. So the motion is withdrawn, the second withdrawn.
There was no second.
No second, so we don't have to withdraw it. Is there a motion for an executive session to discuss labor relations?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session with the board and the town manager for labor relations.
Is there? Has a second. Any discussion? All over the favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.